We're here a long time. Just in case, I might need a snack. I might need a snack.
I'm gonna pass out some water.
Okay.
Oh, shoot. Not sure why the news is here today, but that's okay. Ready? Everybody's ready? Okay, at this time, I'm calling the City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Here. Excused.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present.
All, please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
The administration, I don't think there's any adjustments or any requests from council. Seeing none, a motion to approve the regular agenda. Motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and approval of payments to the vendors should be $1,286,622.36.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council members wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? Councilman Lamore?
Yes, I'd like to have item number 3511 and 3512 pulled for further review.
Okay. Other items from council that wish to be pulled for further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Item 3521.
3521. Any others from council? Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any of the remaining items on the consent agenda?
There are copies of the agendas right there.
The agendas are also posted on the city's website for access as well, but I'll take a moment so you can look at that. It starts in the bottom of the first page where the first one is 3526, which is Authorization and Signing. And then in terms of the back page, there's five other items, three of which have been pulled. The two that have not been pulled is an appointment, and the other is the wastewater treatment plant, secondary and final tank replacement valve replacements. Okay? I'll see, I'll just make sure it seems, oh, thank you for asking. Is there other, any other items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, a motion be ordered in order regarding the consent agenda? Councilman Felder?
I would make a motion that all items not pulled from the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore regarding the consent agenda, that all items not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave. Vining. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
So the next, oh, yes, wait. So the items that were pulled will go at the end of the council action.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is under Presentations, Communication, and Public Hearing, Hearings, and the first item is 3513, MCOP's Second Quarter Report for the Opportunity Center at ALCC.
Mr. Pastu?
To add, Your Honor, other than, it's a quarterly report submitted by MCOP regarding operations at the Opportunity Center. It'd be their second quarter being their fiscal year, which runs January to the end of March.
Okay, we have the report that was on the agenda and available for not only council, but those to review as well. And this is a, an action to simply accept and place on file the second quarterly report. Unless there's questions of council for the management, administration. Yeah? I guess we need a, yeah, we need a motion to accept and place on file.
Your Honor?
Councilman Felder?
I move to accept and place on file the second quarter report from the Monroe County Opportunity Program of the Operations, the Opportunity Center at ALCC.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore regarding item 3513, the MCOP's Second Quarter Report. No further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder. Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item.
The next item, 3508, Arbor Day, April 29, 2022.
Thank you. I know that we have received a request to have a proclamation for Arbor Day. I don't believe I see the person making the request, so I'm gonna review that quickly. Just some items that were. Now, my comments at the end being regarding opportunities there are for Labor Day activities. But proclamation for the city, and as we recognize Arbor Day, of course Arbor Day's, you know, Mr. Sterling and Founding was here in the city of Monroe many, many years ago. But it's, I'm gonna highlight some items that are in here, that in 1872, Jay Morton Sterling, Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture for a special day be set aside for planting of trees. This holiday now called Arbor Day was first observed in planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. So while it's in Nebraska, the, Jay Sterling Morton was from Monroe. You know, it talks here, whereas the trees play a significant role to our environment and quality of life. You know, there's items here reference to the school, because I know that Manor School is asked to have a presentation coming up here in planting of trees at the school again this year, now that we're back kind of in session. And the importance of the trees and what they mean to children, and also shade of our homes. And whereas the city of Monroe was named in 2021 Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation in its honor and its commitment to effective urban forestry management. Whereas there's over 11,000 city-maintained trees within the Forestry Department of the city of Monroe to help improve the quality of life and for our residents. Whereas the city of Monroe wishes to emphasize the importance of planting and sponsoring an Arbor Day celebration at Manor Elementary School this year. So it goes on to conclude, of course, proclaiming that, because the day, that's the day we're going to be doing it with the students. So we're proclaiming April 29, 2022, as Arbor and Bobcat Day, because that is Students for Manor Day. Our Manor School, I'm sorry. And so this is the proclamation, of course, the other parts of that is available, that's if, need from the clerk, or online as well. So that's the, I'll say the proclamation, I'll ask, was there any questions from council? And there's no action that's taken, it's something that will be presented at a Manor School on the 29th. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3524, Public Hearing on Proposed Ordinance 22-002, which is the budget ordinance, and there are no comments on file in the Clerk Treasurer's Office.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, for those that aren't aware, that we'll open the public hearing for any comments there may be. It's to the, regarding the proposed ordinance 22-002, it comes later in the agenda under the council action. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, item 3524, Proposed Ordinance 22-002. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding the proposed ordinance for this public hearing? Any comments for the public hearing? I'll see if there's any comments from council, I know that's an action item, so comments can be made there as well. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 3493, Proposed Ordinance 22-002, Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023, up for its final reading.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, a review, I know there's much within the budget, we had those sessions and meetings, the first reading, and work sessions, but if there's a review you'd have.
Just a quick overview, Your Honor, what this ordinance would do is say, adopt the 2022-23 budget, a little over $75 million in gross amount. Along with that, it also amends the current fiscal year 21-22 budget based on the estimates provided during the budget process. In addition, it itemizes all of the various operating and capital millages that would be levied by the city for operations and capital and debt. And then also it would adopt the rates for both water and sewer funds as well. So, you know, again, as we've talked about, we had a budget work session and then discussed, introduced it at the last council meeting.
Thank you. Any comments from council on the budget? Just make, I'll make a brief comment, within the information that was provided, and it is online for everybody to see, there is also a general fund, fund balance trend. The council, not only does a budget for this year, but we look three years out and have our long-term budget plan. We also do projected budgets out five years. So we try to anticipate knowing what the revenues and anticipation would be, we start to draft those as projected budgets. But our, this, this item here is for the budget for 2022-23. And the others are on there as well, it not only shows the anticipated costs and revenues, but also the fund balance and as we move forward. So I just wanna make that additional information. There's no comments from council, or Councilman Lamore?
I just make a motion, Your Honor.
Please do.
Make a motion that Proposed Ordinance 22-002, the budget ordinance, an ordinance approving the expenditures for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, be placed for its final reading.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item 3493, the proposed budget, I'm sorry, Proposed Ordinance 22-002, the budget ordinance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Shall this ordinance, I'm sorry, read it first.
Ordinance 22-002, Budget Appropriations Act, July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. An ordinance to approve the budget for the city of Monroe for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, the city of Monroe ordains.
Thank you, Clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3522, New Police Station Addition to 911 East Third Street, Professional Services Award.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. City administration is requesting council approval of a professional service agreement with Redstone Architects related to a modified schematic design for the proposed police station that would take place at 911 East Third Street. We, the council has established a steering committee to review this project, and ultimately, I think we know that we will likely require some sort of referendum pertaining to its financing. And so what this does, though, is puts in place the architect, working with our construction manager, OCH Construction, related to having enough detail to make a decision regarding what that cost is reasonably going to be, and which would drive the decision related to the, to the financing. The context of it is, the police station was presented and is incorporated into the capital improvements program. We have looked at other facilities, notably being 212 East Front, which we have a purchase agreement outstanding related to that. But in evaluating the cost of renovation, as well as a new facility, it was determined that it would not be cost-effective, and we also looked at the Monroes potential facility as a location, and, and again, I think the difficulties with its functional layout, we had eliminated that from further consideration. And so the design of the fire station several years ago, contemplated an addition of the police station, and this would be carrying out part of that. But it is necessary to know what the anticipated cost would be in, in order to determine what the financing related to that would be. Thanks.
Any questions from council on this item for Mr. Pastu? Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Not really a question, just a reiteration of what the city manager mentioned, is that this is basically looking into the potential of building a police station next to the fire station. So I just wanna make sure our constituents, our residents all are aware that we're not spending money aimlessly here, just trying to find out if this is the right fit for the city of Monroe to put a new police station next to the fire station, and that's pretty much all that this means.
Other comments from council? Councilman Felder?
We have a police station steering committee on this, correct?
That's correct.
And does that committee have a comment or report regarding this item at this time?
Well, I said.
If I may, just.
Because I could speak for myself, but with other council members, I don't want to speak for other council members. But from the initial meeting we have, it's a great question, Mr. Pastu, your, what you received from the steering committee?
Essentially, a review where we have been in the past related to other sites considered, and what it was gonna require going forward. Essentially, what the proposal have in front of you is what we had talked with the steering committee probably three, four weeks ago about what it would take to provide sufficient detail and estimates of cost to, as to what this project would entail going forward to consider the financing of it. So they were all presented with it and felt that it was probably the best location to move forward with it, and this would be the appropriate next step with that.
Okay, thank you.
So I do sit on that, as was steering committee that was set up, Councilwoman Vining, and Councilwoman Stillgrave also sit on that committee, along with other members of staff in the city. The discussions revolved around what was in the fact sheet about information on the analysis that was done on other sites. This goes back many years, when, three years ago, when the fire station was completed, it was designed in that fashion, as the fact sheet says, with the understanding that may be a potential site in the future, we need to consider the building of a new police station. So that's where we are today, and to do that, now it requires this professional service contract to start the next phase of that. I will say that the police station steering committee has standing meetings, we actually have one tomorrow. And we meet on Tuesdays after council meetings generally, but I don't have the entire schedule in front of me, which I know the clerk has as well. So that's just kind of message to the community regarding our next steps. If there's other comment, or Councilman Lamore?
Not a comment, just a motion, Your Honor. That the attached professional services contract with Redstone Architects be approved in an amount of up to $67,500 plus $12,500 for a subconsultance as needed, then an additional $3,694.36 in funding be approved from a previous review of 20 West First Street, that the director of engineering and public services be authorized to enter into any necessary agreements on behalf of the city, and that the finance director be authorized to make any necessary budget transfers, including from capital project fund reserves. I do have one thing to add to that, is 20 West First Street supposed to be 20 West Front or 20 Front?
Should be front. No?
20 West First.
It is 20 West First, okay. I will continue with that motion.
There's a motion of support from Councilwoman Stillgrave, I heard. I'll see, I'll see if there's any additional comments from council. None? Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item is item 3520, Consideration of a Residential Infill Development Agreement with Patriot Group Construction LLC.
Mr. Pastu?
Your honor, Mr. Cochran, if you'll, just do a brief introduction.
Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development. As the fact sheet stated, and as you may recall, the work session back in February 2022, we presented a proposal which was provided to us by Ryan Philbeck and Patriot Group Construction that looked at completing some residential infill development on existing residential lots throughout the city. And so taking the feedback that we received from that work session, we went, worked with legal counsel and Mr. Philbeck to negotiate the development agreement that is presented in this evening's packet. And I'm just gonna give a very high-level overview of some of the high points that are in the agreement. In one correction, the fact sheet does say that the development agreement includes 13 vacant city-owned properties. When we were working on the fact sheet, we were continuing to refine the list, and so the correct list is actually attached to the development agreement draft that is included in tonight's packet, and looks at seven existing infill development lots that are city-owned, buildable, and legal conforming according to the zoning code for residential infill development. And so the properties, as, as we indicated at the February work session, will be sold to the developer for a dollar. And at that time, the developer, Mr. Philbeck and Patriot Group, have to submit a site plan and all the necessary documents regarding permits and zoning approval and site plan approval. And then once those documents are approved, then conveyance will occur. And so they won't be conveyed until we've already approved the site plan. And while single-family homes are the primary objectives, or maybe a couple, and we, we include language in the development agreement, that the city retains the right to approve multifamily residential opportunities if the zoning is, regulations are compliant with the property. The agreement is through December 31, 2025, which takes us through the construction season in 2025 for three years to work through the list, and has the opportunity to be extended by one year with the city council's approval. Within six months of closing, after the site plan has been approved, then the developer has to start construction within six months from that closing date. If construction doesn't start within six months, then the city retains the option to buy the property back for the sale price, which is a dollar for the period of a year. And then once construction is completed and the final inspections have occurred, the developer has to list the property for sale with the real estate agent for a period of six months. And then if the property does not sell within six months, the developer can consider the rental of the property in accordance with the laws and the regulations that are in place with the city. So that's a high level. One thing to note is, as council may recall, last year we presented a report of all the city-owned properties across the city. We're just starting with these seven, but there is language in the agreement that does allow for the addition or removal of properties in the future with city council's approval if they want to add more. We are gonna continue looking at all the different properties and the effect that it has on engineering, public services, utilities, and things of that sort, through the due diligence period with the developer, too, so.
Questions from Mr. Cochran, from council? Thank you, Mark. So the item is 35, or 3520, is up for council consideration. Councilman Felder, you have your hand up.
Do you have questions?
No, I just make a motion.
Okay.
I do have questions. I saw Brian raise his hand, I was gonna defer. The agreement says 13, but lists only seven. I know, Mark, you identified that when you spoke. Does the agreement need to be amended to reflect that at all, or are we comfortable with the language?
The fact sheet said 13. Does the agreement say 13 as well?
What a wonderful question.
We just attached the exhibit that lists the seven properties.
Right. I'll go back and look, but I believe so. That's one for the attorneys. I'll keep going while they do that. And notably absent here are any projects inside the Orchard Subarea Plan, on the premise that we're gonna wait till the subarea plan terminates until we make a determination on how we move forward in that direction, similar to how we're approaching other city projects in that area.
Yep, that's correct.
That's consistent, that's fine. I've voiced my concerns in the past regarding the transfer of property. I think at the meeting that, that the proposal was, was brought up. I do not fault Mr. Philbeck at all for presenting us a proposal that is advantageous to him. I would expect nothing less. Were I to write a contract, I certainly would do the same. There is an acquisition cost for these properties at the time that they are acquired by us. It is free. It is frequent that we will pay market value to acquire the properties for the purposes of future strategic planning and development. That's not out of character for the city to engage in. I think that this is a greater use than their current vacant status. I am thrilled to see the development in the area and have said and mean that, same as my comments in the last meeting. I would like to have some conversation on council. I had looked forward to a work session this evening, but the time during the work session was otherwise occupied by council, about how these properties are conveyed. I have heard creative solutions to property conveyance by cities in other areas of giving to the homeowners themselves, which then the property can be used as collateral to get a loan and financing to make housing affordable, which may or may not be a priority, affordable housing in an upcoming housing strategy discussion, which I think should happen at some point. It hasn't happened yet. And so we're sort of in a position where you, where City Hall is moving sufficiently fast and good job, but I think we're sort of left in this, in this, with a gap in planning to be able to support and inform those decisions. I would be amenable, if council shared my view, to table this until such a chance, until such a time after which council has had a chance to discuss other conveyance alternatives, but I will yield to my colleagues here and see what they have to say.
Councilman Lamore?
Yeah, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Andrew. I think that I would like to see this go forward, and I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse, but I think that it's important that we get ahead of this curve and get it going because the construction season is upon us, and I think in order to get this property turned around, get it turned around in a fair amount of time, I think it's going to, it's going to take every last bit of effort that we can get just to get this thing moving right now, and I don't want to delay it in our court here. I want to keep it moving, and I think this is a positive thing, and I think it's something that's going to turn, like you said, the property into a positive for the city, and I don't want to delay any of that. I think that's something that's necessary for that to happen, but I do understand your concern, so I appreciate that, but I think that it's, I think it's worthy project, and I think it needs to be pushed forward, because a lot of times we have too many delays, and I don't want to be the one delaying anything, any of this.
Other councils, or other comments from other council members? There's two, so I'll start at the end and see who's there. And first, Councilwoman Stilgrave?
I agree with Councilman Lamore. I believe that this should, this project should move forward. I think it's a good opportunity for the city, and just wanted to state that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilman Vining?
I, too, have some concerns about moving forward with the consideration of this agreement, just because we've had so much conversation about beginning a housing strategy, and I don't know if we start now and then we start the housing strategy later, if it will fit into our housing plan. So I kind of felt like it was a little bit putting the cart before the horse, but I do like the program. I just felt like I would like to discuss it a bit more amongst council. So I would be agreeable to tabling it as well, and hopefully we could get a work session going on to further discuss it.
He has any comments, and I have some comments.
My only comment is I don't want us to lose an investor in the city. I understand everybody's feelings. I see both sides of it, but again, we could lose an investor and lose gaining housing in neighborhoods where we need housing. That's my only comment.
Thanks. So I have a question for Mr. Cochran first, because we've had conversations in the past about this through a work session, is also in, I guess, opinions at that time of moving forward with the Patriot Group Construction. How many vacant lots are currently not, well, there's many vacant lots that I would say that fell within the buildable?
I think there was about forty or so.
Correct. So that's what I recall, I just want to make sure. So there's forty lots that we have identified that are buildable within the city. The fact sheet indicates thirteen. If you go to Exhibit A in the online here, it's seven properties and the locations are listed on there. When I look, when I look through the items and where they're at, they're in residential neighborhoods, which are in developed neighborhoods that have a vacant lot between houses. The purpose, I'm just giving my thought as I read through this and why I think we should move forward, but it's asking for infill development. It's not vacant parcels, it's not large parcels, it's not where you can put multiple residents of any type. It's about infill with vacant lots. We've had some success in some of our vacant lots that are, I'll say, undersized, where neighboring residents have asked to acquire them, and we make that because it gets it back in within the property or the ownership of a resident, and of course becomes taxable as well. So I look at these lots, and then they're all across the city. When we have forty, and we didn't identify, and there's more, but they may be not buildable lots, so the idea is to move forward as quick as we can to get these, have builds on them and become taxable. That's the, that's the purpose. So I understand the conversation about the housing discussions that have been ongoing and how we do that, but if we're waiting for that, it'll be a long time down the road. It's not just a discussion at a work session to have that, because it's going to take not only the discussion, but what, where the housing market is, where we will build that housing market, and how is it compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. For me, this project, which is smaller, even is six locations to start with, meets those criteria for me. It's a vacant lot that is going to have a house, it's not going to be a development of multiple houses when you talk about a strategy of types of houses of a large sense. So I don't think it's going to be, I don't, I don't see it to be non-compatible with the neighborhoods in the locations where they're at. I do agree, we're going to have a conversation, should, about an overall overarching discussion on what is the housing, how do we provide housing and have that broader look, but also that conversation is going to be, I think, a little longer in detail, and that's where we have consultants or others that come in and they'll do the market analysis. They'll tell us, just like we did the market analysis on the Lazy Boy site that's coming to build now, is do we, do we move forward with that type of facility that's being, going to be built there, or does the market tell you that, don't do that, because it's not, you're not going to get the return? I don't think the market analysis is going to tell us that these properties shouldn't have homes on them and they're infill lots. So it's just my thought, and while I welcome a work session to have discussion, I wouldn't want to see these, this process move forward for the amount it is, and actually it's nearly half less than what we originally thought, though they're, understand there's other lots that are out there. I guess the last point is, I think about the time, the time we spent first identifying this, and it's been a long time, we've not had received, we've not received other development groups, groups or individual property owners that says they would like to buy the lot and build a house. And part of the reason for selling it the way we did, and we talked about that, is because the margins are very tight on housing and building individual homes, and the idea was to get a home built, knowing that the developer, I guess, as we hold a developer to what our expectations are, but also knowing that the margin then becomes not a push at the end, that they're getting a margin of meeting the expectations upfront because of the value of the lot that was said. So I think there's a benefit to that. It's not something that I think is going to be my position on every vacant lot, but I think we need to start somewhere, and this allows us at least to start to show that we have a housing strategy to put single or multiple-use homes in these lots that are here. So that's my, I'll stop, that's my comments. I'll see if there's any follow-up comments from council. Councilman Felder?
If timing is an issue, I'm happy to perhaps offer up an alternative that may solve those and may alleviate some of the concerns that have been put forward as well. If instead of a one-dollar purchase price, we amend it to say whatever the city's, purchase price of whatever the city's acquisition cost is, or was on that property at the time that we acquired it, no interest, no taxes for the period that we held it, no anything, just whatever we paid for it. It must have been worth that, elsewise we would have not have paid that amount, and I think that that would square us up.
Well, I think if we don't acquire properties, and when we do at the time strategically, then we are subject to those that get them off the tax sale, and then we sit there with the net, getting never built, or something that may not be as agreeable. Mr. Pastu?
Council, it's got a couple of practical items to contemplate. One is, it is an agreement that requires four affirmative votes, and counting votes here, if it was to go forward, you'd probably even have four, and therefore not proceed. The other thing with it is, and it's a broader discussion, but clearly I understand what Councilmember Felder's getting at, but the marketplace has been screaming at us that they're not investing in some of these properties, and so in many ways, we have to take the initiative, and candidly, being someone from the outside, I can readily basically tell we've made bad policy decisions in the past not to address some of these opportunities to get control of it, and I do feel strongly that, at least in this case here, we've got some properties that at least will start with some infill development project. We've got plenty of other vacant ones, but this is a start and certainly buys us an opportunity to continue with looking at a broader housing policy, but these are in residential neighborhoods where there's vacant parcels, and I don't think anyone's going to object to having some infill development that's compatible with that, with those neighborhoods. So as a practical matter, we've got to decide if we're going to do this tonight, but a broader discussion regarding, you know, some of these vacant parcels, because I think that if you put it on that price, it's been out there and available, and nobody's moved on it for decades, and so this is the reality of the economics of it, so.
Mr. Pastu, just to clarify, because I heard four, but this is a development agreement which requires five votes, correct?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. Other comments from council, further discussion? Well, we'll start with a motion and see where it goes, if there is a motion at all.
A motion to approve the residential infill development agreement with Patriot Group Construction LLC and authorize the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city.
A second.
It's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stilgrave on item thirty-five-twenty, the consideration of a residential infill development agreement with Patriot Group Construction LLC. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jermaine?
Yes.
Yes.
Felder?
No.
Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
No.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So it's a four-two, as I understand, I'll look to Mr. Budson, of course, Mr. Pastu, it does not pass.
Your Honor, that would be correct. It would take five affirmative votes for a approval of a contract this evening.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item will be one of the items pulled from the consent agenda. So I'm going to go in order, not necessarily chronological, but order as they appear on the consent agenda, okay? So item three-five-two-one, consideration to extension amendment to agreement with Bird Rides, Inc.
Felder?
Yes, on this issue in the past, I know that we've discussed the amendment with the agreement as we move to extend. I would like to review what those amendments are with the community. I know that we've had some concerns regarding this item that the community has expressed in the past. I want to know what the amendments are and how we're going to address those concerns, and then I have some follow-up questions regarding the deployment sites, but given that education has consistently been an issue surrounding this item, both for riders and for the motorists that need to accompany them on the roadways, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to get that message out there.
So your questions from Mr. Cochran are?
What are the amendments that are we engaging in so that that can be reiterated for the community, and then how does that address some of the resident concerns that have been brought forward on this issue in the past?
So, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development, and so the attachment, which is the extension agreement amendment to the original memorandum of understanding lays out four different amendments to the original agreement that we took back to Bird as a result of the work session discussion that we held previously this year. And so the first one is that the company will provide the city with contact information for local fleet managers. I know one of the concerns that was brought up previously with the Bird program was that the electronic scooters were being housed in an office downtown, and so that individual who was managing the Bird fleet at that time was unloading and loading them every night and every morning in the downtown, in the office, parking his van on the street, blocking a lane for a period of time, and cluttering the sidewalk with some of the scooters. And so they do have two new fleet managers that we've had discussions with Bird Corporate about, and we'll be having some discussion with them if the agreement is passed tonight before the scooters are launched, and those, they're not being housed in the downtown or the central business district this year either, so. The next is the company will work with the city to identify and implement permitted deployment and rebalancing areas within the downtown district. Again, there was issues last year with the fleet manager dropping the scooters off on the sidewalk in the downtown area, even if that area was closer to the curb rather than in the middle of the sidewalk, and so we've asked Bird if they would work with us and city staff to identify where the birds will be deployed every day and when they relocate them every day, where that's going to be in a more convenient, more appropriate location within the downtown, which still makes them easier and visible to find, but doesn't send the message that we park them on the sidewalk, so they must be able to be ridden on the sidewalks. And then, of course, that doesn't stop everybody from stopping their rides on the sidewalk. This is just where the Bird fleet manager will be deploying them and rebalancing them every day. The public will still be encouraged not to park them on the sidewalk, not to leave them in the prohibited right-of-way area. Next is the deployment and rebalancing areas within the downtown district as demand permits, and so it sort of reiterates the previous item a little redundant. And then the next is the company will provide to the city at least once a month, on the first day of every month, a list of where they're being deployed all across the city. Bird operates based on data. They deploy them where they're going to be most picked up and ridden, and so they change it every day, but we're going to be working to get some more routine deployment locations and getting that list at least once a month from the company. And then also, we had some discussion with them about signage and rider education, working the original memorandum of understanding committed Bird to working with the city on signage, particularly for where birds can be ridden, where they can be dropped off, and so the city will be working with them to develop more signage, particularly in the downtown area for the rider education, and then continuing the rider education program that we did last year with the app sending push notifications and reminders and having the stickers on the scooters themselves, doing constant reinforcement of that messaging.
Counselman?
Thank you, sir. Regarding the deployment locations downtown, the deployment locations are going to be listed for the entire city, and it says in the agreement there will be a rebalancing of areas in the downtown district, in noting that that's not the only place that those deployment areas are going to be active, it's just an area of concentrated interest, given citizen concerns that have come, that have come to light in the past, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, like you, like you mentioned, just because that's where the scooters are deployed does not necessarily mean that that's where they're going to be dropped off, and of course, that's going to be on the users and riders themselves, but hopefully the app says, I think, and I think that you went over last time that we went over this, that it does, say, hey, please, you know, place these in a responsible location and not in the middle of a sidewalk or a road or something.
Also encouraging the public and staff and other folks, if you see a Bird scooter that's not where it's supposed to be, you can always report that to Bird. If you down, I know it's a little bit cumbersome, but if you download the app, scan it and report it that it's in an inappropriate place, then Bird will send the fleet manager out to relocate that, as well as track down the user who dropped it there, and do some outreach to that user who may have dropped it inappropriately and left it in a bad location, but that's where the two-way interaction comes in, where, you know, public informing us or Bird that there's a scooter in appropriately placed, and then them making sure that they're taking the action necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, for the education lesson for our residents and riders.
You're welcome.
Councilman Vining? Councilwoman Vining?
I don't know if I overlooked it in the contract, but did you state where the charging points will be for the fleet managers? Or who the fleet managers are we needed to contact them?
Yep, that'll be communicated to the city. I know they're not, one of the fleet managers is not a city resident, so they're not even going to be housed in the city. They'll be picked up and taken to where that location is. But I don't have that information off the top of my head.
I was just asking because I was curious if, so these new locations will eliminate the loading and unloading in the downtown area. Curious if they'll cause an issue in the new locations as far as loading and unloading.
Not for the city, I would say, because they're not going to be in the city.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll make sure that's addressed when we do find out where, I know the second fleet manager we haven't identified yet, but where that's going to be, we'll make sure that that's addressed.
Other questions from council? So you know, third question, so it's an item on the agenda for action.
Your Honor?
Councilman Felder?
I'd make a motion that item number 2521, in approval of the extension amendment of the memorandum of understanding with Bird Rides Incorporated and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city.
I'll second. But we need to change the item number to 3521.
2521.
Correct? Okay, this is motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamoore. Other conversation? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stelgrave? Vining? Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item is item 3511, 2020 Eagle River Raisin AOC Grant Agreement Amendment Acceptance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of questions regarding this. My understanding, this is a grant to, that comes from the, I'll ask Barry to step forward. If he can just answer some questions regarding this. Just give me a little bit more input. I know there was quite a bit of write-up on it, but I sometimes end up confusing this with the next item. And I wanted to make sure that they are two separate items, and I just wanted to see what the difference between the two was. The Eagle Grant for the River Raisin Area of Concern versus the Legacy Project. And do they run together? Am I correct in saying that or not?
Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater for the City of Monroe. Yes, they actually, they are co-mingled. The area of concern is at the mouth of the river. The River Raisin Legacy Project is, it's an item documentary really that we are creating to kind of, for the legacy of the river. Our website is, the City of Monroe website has a River Raisin Legacy link right on it with all that information specifically for it. The grant from the Department of Eagle, they, they're extending their grant from EPA, and they asked us for additional scope items that are needed for us to complete the original grant scope. And with COVID, some of the prices went up quite a bit. And there were some additional items needed in the documentary. So the acceptance of the grant is just to collect the funds needed to complete those tasks. And it's 100% grant-funded. There's no city costs, other than our staff time that we're putting in to complete it.
Okay, now, the next question I would have would be regarding a, I suppose, a bidding process. And I understand the grant was approved based on the people that were going to carry out the work. But, you know, we still, we don't want to ignore that there is a bidding process within the city, that we should retain three bids for each project that we're going to do, whether it's something that's retained by a grant or city funding. Correct me if I'm wrong. But that would be my major concern with this is that, you know, let's say somebody may have a different bid for this project that may be similar, may include more information in it. You know, and I'm not trying to undermine anybody that's involved in this, but I just want to make sure that we're not discluding the bidding process that we have within the city, that all people involved have an opportunity to bid on this. That's my major concern.
Your Honor, if I may, I think in this case here, think in terms if we were doing a construction change order, where you have someone that is familiar with the project and the desire to continue on, you go out for a bid, then you're going to be, again, from a staff's time, bringing time and effort to bring people up to date. So I would think of it in terms, in the context of a change order that's funded at no cost to the city, nor has it been at any time.
No, I understand that. And I read through the different things on the list there. And like, this goes on well with the 3512 as well with the, so I'm including this for both items here when I ask these questions. But, and I understand there's some compensation going to certain people that are also potentially city employees, or am I correct in saying that or not?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Or family of city employees?
There probably could be in that regard, yeah.
Okay.
But nobody directly.
Well, just want to make sure we're not breaking into conflict.
Even that, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
What's that?
I'm not sure even there, that's direct, how direct it is.
Make sure that there is no conflict of interest in things like that. That's why I'm bringing this about. If I don't question it, somebody in the public may question it. And I want to make sure we're doing things on the up and up with the city. That's, I just want to maintain our standards.
Let me ask this question, because it may be tied to Councilwoman Morse. So the proposal addresses the PAC grant task, but also, I'm going to the second one here, and the funding for the support. And it's not a match requirement, but who initiates the contract?
For 3512 or 3511?
I guess for each, then.
So 3511 is, it's just the, there's a, oh, an amendment that is part of the original contract that the city council accepted back in 2020. It's just an amendment to that, to accept additional funds, to complete the additional tasks.
This is a city contract?
Well, it's a contract with the city and the state, yes.
Okay. And then the second one?
The second item is a professional consulting service that is based on the original award back in 2020. And it's just completing the additional tasks needed to complete the documentary. As the city manager pointed out, it's more like a change order to finish the project.
And who is that contract with?
With Figure Town, Motion Possible.
I'm talking about who, is it the city, is it?
It would be a contract between the city and Motion Possible.
Okay, thank you. Just kind of, I think what Councilwoman Morse is getting toward.
Correct. Okay. I'd agree with that. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, putting this out in the public so that they understand when they see things like this, that they, that it's not just something that we just drum up and just toss out there and just do it just because we're getting money for it.
Right, right.
Want to make sure there's a necessity for it, want to make sure that there's, that all the due diligence is put forward. And as you said, this was a previous contract, so that's one thing that I want to make sure. Obviously, I wasn't, I know that we had a contract before, but I had not realized this was part of a stage. This is the next step in doing the filming process, the area of concern of the River Raisin. Is that correct?
Yes, it's documenting the legacy of that, yep.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Germaine?
So they came to us and needed more information from us in order to finish it, correct? We didn't go to them, they came to us?
Correct. Yeah, they completed their original task. The state is delayed in providing the next grant and said, if you have additional work tasks to complete, solicit some to us and we would, you know, offer an amendment to your existing contract. And at the same time, just because the end of August is not too far around the corner, we want to, we need to be able to finish the work by then. So that's why it's on the agenda at the same time.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Felder, do you have a question?
Yeah, just sort of speaking out of the committee and the work that they've continued to be doing. So obviously, the river's not always been in the best condition. And anytime there's an inhibiting factor, we call that a beneficial use impairment. We've removed a lot of those already, so a lot of good work has already been done. There are four that are still remaining, so we're not quite there yet, and we need to keep pushing. And then also, we need to prepare in strategy and scope what avenues the committee needs to take going forward into the future. And that's a discussion that the committee has had, and this is part of that, part of that goal and that movement. It's projects like these that when we handed the award down, down the way, that it came out of the work that was done on this committee. And there's a lot of people here who I have the pleasure of working with, who spend a lot of their own personal volunteer time making it happen. So I think it's certainly worthwhile. We've done a lot of good things, and I think there's a lot of good left to come. So thank you, Barry.
Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Lamoore?
Just to follow that up, I'm not questioning anybody that's here, and I think the project's good. I don't think there's any issue with that. It's just that it's been such a long time since this project took off. And now it's kind of resettling in again. And that's the thing that I want to make sure that the public doesn't have any questions about, so that we're straightforward. We're not holding anything back from them, that they know that this is legitimate and that it's been basically sought through. And sometimes they see something like this and they may question it. That's one of the things I want to make sure that there's no questions.
I don't, I didn't take offense at all. I hope Barry didn't either. I think it's very much in good form that you asked it, and I think that the explanation is appropriate.
Thank you.
There's no other questions. Item 3511, which is on the floor, is up for action.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to accept Eagle Grant Amendment Four for the Public Advisory Support Grant of the River Raisin AOC titled Public Support Grant for River Raisin AOC 2020 to 2022 for increasing the grant amount from timeframe and timeframe. And for the grantee contact utility director, it would be, I'm assuming, Barry Leroy, be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the City of Monroe to meet the grant obligations.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Morse, supported by Councilman Felder on item 3511, the 202022 Eagle WRD Agreement Amendment. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Item?
The next item is item 3512, Professional Consulting Service, River Raisin Legacy Project Two Documentary Film Additional Work Scope.
Councilwoman Lamoore?
Yes, I think all the answers were given to me by Director Leroy. And we've discussed this pretty much after discussing 3511, so I'm pretty well set on this. And I'm ready to make a motion on that as well.
Okay, there's a motion, Mike. I'll take this as a motion.
I have not made, do you want me to make the motion or, sure. Make a motion to approve the Motion Possible Team at Figure Ground Productions Incorporated Professional Consulting Services Proposal of Additional Work Scope Titled River Raisin Legacy Project Two Extended Version as per the River Raisin Legacy Project Two Documentary Film in the amount of $20,720.10, increasing the total award to $66,254.60, with a total encumbered award amount of $66,700, amended grant task maximum, which includes a 1% contingency and to authorize the Director of Water and Wastewater to sign all necessary agreement documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the original. There's a motion by Councilwoman Lamoore, I think, or support from Councilwoman Germaine. And Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stelgrave?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Clerk, next item, please. So it's council comments. Councilwoman Germaine, it is April, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. This Saturday is Earth Day. And I wanted to mention that out at the college at the Jerry Welch Building, there will be an Earth Day event for families. There's a lot of kids' events from 11 to 2. It's all free. A lot of activities, a lot of learning experiences for green environments. That is this Saturday, and the weather's going to be great. So 11 to 2 for college. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamoore?
Well, we welcomed winter back today. Call this Indian winter, not Indian summer. So I hope everyone was prepared for that. I would like to thank Mr. Philbeck for being here. I don't want him to run away with this. We want to do this project. I think maybe just a few more answers regarding the housing arrangement here in Monroe will help. But this is one of the things that I really believe in, and I think we need to, as a council, do whatever we can to get these things going as fast and as possible and get them completed as quickly as possible so that we can get these properties back on the tax rolls and help other parts of the community with the investment that they bring forward. So I really hope he's patient with us and he'll stick with us because I truly believe in what he's trying to do here. You know, and I know that we have some issues, and this is one of the reasons I asked a lot of these questions regarding the River Raisin AOC, is because there's a lot of things that are going through our minds fast and furious. And for council to catch up on some things, it can be very difficult and strenuous. And being able to arrange meeting times for all of us can be very difficult as well. So I think what we need to do is just take a deep breath, relax, and try to help staff accomplish some of these goals. Understand that they are under stress with a lot more things than they're able to handle at this time. We've had a lot of retirees, we've had a lot of change within the environment of the city. And I think for us, just to step back, take a deep breath, not relax, that's, I definitely don't want to do that because I think the minute we do that, we fall behind. And we want to gain momentum with the new people that we're going to be bringing in and get right back on track. So like I said, with this project that Mr. Philbeck brings forward, I really think it's going to help the city. And I think we need to find a way to say yes with that as quickly as possible and bring it forward. And I, no further comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. Hope everyone had a good Easter. Certainly with the development project, the intention was not to shoot it down. And that was why I was trying to offer up an alternative to that, either tabling or have a discussion at a later date. And I understand that time is a factor. But we haven't had a chance to talk about it yet. I was hoping that we would in some more detail, perhaps at a work session, but that wasn't, we weren't able to make that happen today either. And again, that's nobody's fault. Certainly some small items with the terms of the agreement, and I hope that we can get there. I think that we'll be able to get there to an agreement that's formed that's beneficial to all sides. I understand that speed is a factor, but I'm not willing to write a blank check to get there. Regarding a takeaway of one of the other things that we've discussed on Trails Committee, which I'm liaison for, it's apparent, as we're undergoing these discussions with this new committee, that we need to engage in zoning with non-motorized transportation in mind. The extent to which we're going to be able to alleviate traffic, motorized vehicular traffic with walking or bike trails or what have you, is going to be dependent on our ability to get from one place to another, to run errands, to commute, to go to the grocery store without getting into a car. And I don't know that we have a city that's well-designed to do that. That's certainly no one's fault. If it is an individual's fault, I'm sure that that person died a century ago. We're an old city. It took a while to get to where we are now, and we need to deal with what we have here and move forward in a positive direction. I think that we can do that, but it's also something that we need to be mindful of. Just want to make the council aware. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stelgrave?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vining?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I too think that the Philbeck project could be a good project. I just think in the greater conversation that we've had addressing things like pathways to homeownership and that they weren't really addressed in terms of housing affordability and those type of things. And I think that they, I mean, we can't tell the developer which direction, but I think that would suggest a plan to do that. Also, I think Andrew made a valid point about transferring the properties. a valid point about transferring the properties for a cost greater than $1. I think we do have all of these vacant lots within the city, but I don't know how much we market ourselves as these properties being available for sale. I know Vince mentioned that many of the properties have sat vacant for years with no interest, but I think that's something we can take a look at as well, is how we market our city in terms of available property. So it's not that I necessarily think it's a bad idea. I just think that there could be more, there could have been a bit more conversation, and hopefully we'll be able to get there with a few tweaks, and hope the developer is willing to listen to some of council's suggestions. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. First, I want to thank the council for approving the appointment this evening to the Commission on the Environment. Mary Ann Seer is very passionate about serving the community. This position on Cody is an education position. The person applying has, besides having a bachelor's in education, master's in educational administration, and an education specialist in leadership and counseling, as well as a doctorate degree, I think, in leadership and supervision, is going to be beneficial and fits what we're looking for. I want to thank Mary Ann for her interest in serving, and again, thank council for supporting the application and to make the appointment. On our agenda tonight was one of the items that was approved during the consent agenda, and that was the transfer of property from the city to Square Properties, and that's the Lazy Boy, a former Lazy Boy development site, which is ongoing. I only make that comment because we're getting to that conclusion. You talk about things that take a time, and there's many things that impact with that, is a site that will start with the development, and this allows us to move forward with the sale transfer of property for initiating, but also through the developer. So we're, I know all of council's glad to see that moving forward and start seeing the progress onsite. There are some other activities, announcements I'd like to make that are coming up tomorrow evening, April 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. again, at the Community College, is the Robert Selden-Duckinson Legacy and Diversity in the Arts. There'll be presentations. It's Art and Literature of Monroe Residents of All Ages will be on display. It's at the Lazy Boy Center, Meyer Theater, and also in the atrium. I know that four of which will be Monroe artists that'll be there will be Laura Atkins, Laura Mochnick, Stacy Hall, and David Larkins. And of course, our host is Dr. Cortez from the Community College. Item that I reported on last time, that is still an opportunity for residents to participate, is the City of Monroe Park and Trail Survey, which is online. There's a QR code on the sites that are out. They see the signs that are out in the community as well, ties to the conversation about non-motorized traffic here in the city and opportunities to how we improve that and how we make the connectivity. Guess my last comment will be on the item that did not pass with Philbeck. I think that was a while ago that we started this conversation, and we're down to seven locations for infill, and that's what it was, infill, not a long-term housing strategy. It fits in with that in the discussion, and it's not about vacant lots. We, I want to thank the staff for the work done on this, but also, I think back when we had lots that were made available to residents, and we have made that outreach during this process. Some residents in various parts of the community have obtained or purchased or received property from the city. I think that, I don't know what the next steps will be with the developer. I'll leave that to staff to have the conversation. I hope we can move forward, but I don't think that we're writing a blank check. I think the, for what development, this was, the amount of properties that we have available are, well, it will be part of our further discussions on a strategy of housing, but I think that's different than an overall large parcels that we have when we talk about what those might be. That's just my view. I'll end my comments there. Clerk Treasure Lavoy?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay. Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pat Weaver in my office will be reaching out to council to schedule a special meeting for next Monday night. And I'm going to ask, and I'm going to go back to the residential infill development. We did have this at a prior work session, and my embarrassment and disappointment is, we weren't told at the staff level, nor Mr. Philbeck, that we needed more information. It's a perfectly good answer in a work session to tell us, we need more. And we would have not presented it tonight had we not thought we had the support and blessing of City Council. So going forward, if you're not comfortable with it, or not enough questions have been answered, please let us know. I don't want to waste Mr. Philbeck's time, you know, having come and visited with Mr. Cochran related to this, nor Mr. Bud's time on that. So we'll have a, as I said, we'll have something for Pat Weaver, reaching out to council for a work session next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is citizens' comments, correct? So, the, at this time in the meeting, it's an opportunity for those present here this evening, if they wish to make any comments. Just be mindful, the rules of the chamber is, we say at every meeting, if you have comments, please direct them to the chair, and the timeframe is three minutes. Please state your name and address the jurisdiction. And I guess that's about it. Any comments from those present here this evening? Yes?
Good evening. I'm Steve Weatherhull.
I'm sorry.
I'm Vice President of the Monroe Art League. We are interested in getting more information about a project you've got in the works or somewhere called Planting Seeds. And it involves some murals that will be painted, and we'd like to know more. We'd like to know what's happening, who we can contact, so we could offer our assistance, because we'd like to become involved in this. Anyone has the information? I know that Mark has some information. I'll speak to him after this. We are a 63-year-old organization founded by Fran Maideau and her friends. We currently have 45 members, and several of them are here tonight. As far as painting the murals, we're an older group. Climbing scaffolding can be, but we have a lot of ideas, we have a lot of input, and we would love to be of service. So, is there any way I can contact information to someone and vice versa?
You did mention Mr. Cochran was here, and I know that he'll be available, he's obviously, whether it's here, you see him before you leave this evening, or if you may contact. The presentation that was given to City Council, I'll state this once for all that are here and those are listening, was presented at a previous town.
Yes, somewhere.
City Council meeting, and it is available through YouTube for anybody to view onsite. And I know that if you have questions on that, if you can't make access to it, Clerk Treasure Lavoy will be able to assist as well of how to make that access. So, it was a presentation to the council at that time, and I, you know, I know it was reported in the paper, but I can't speak for that. And I would say, if you haven't seen the presentation, that probably will give you a lot of background information and what the intent and purpose was that they presented to us. But I'd just say, see Mr. Cochran if you will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan, did you have anything to add?
Well, we'll see if anybody else has any comments. Other comments from those present this evening? Name and address the jurisdiction, please. Yes, step forward.
I'm afraid that most of my notes were covered by...
Name, please, because this has got to be...
Oh, sorry!
It's okay for the record, because otherwise they'll say, well, who spoke?
Hello, my name is Susan Grant. I'm also a member of the Monroe Art League. A few of my points were covered, but already, but I was going to say, in general, for the mural initiative, I think the more murals, more murals than just this one could have benefits. They could have tourism benefits. I also, the idea, it might be cool if the Lake Erie Transit, what if we had a mural at the, at the wait station? I thought that would be a lovely place to see it. People go to stop there all the time. And I also thought it might be cool if the buses, like, the buses could use a nice, some art on it. I also thought that we could use a, oh goodness, this all seems so much easier on paper.
Take your time.
I also thought that perhaps some vinyl banners might be nice. They could stick to areas, like any business that has a glass front, if we could talk to them, we could get some art on those businesses, if they would be okay with it. And they could be produced. If you just make one design, it could be reproduced. But anyway, I just thought that, I was just going to restate that we would be very interested in helping with the beautification of Monroe, and that it would be nice for tourism and for informing visitors about all of the nice things they can do in Monroe. That's all.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from those present this evening? Yes, sir? Name and city jurisdiction, please.
How you doing? My name is Rodney Reed, and I'm here today to talk about the city street where I'm resident at, at 206 Conant, and it's caving in and it's messing with my sewer line. I'm having sewer back up in my house, and it's very foul smell, and I need to know when the city can come down and take a look at that and get that fixed. It was a problem before, like about three years ago, and they came and fixed on it, and it did solve the problem, but right now, today, is the problem's even worse, and the problem's even worse at my home. So, I mean, I know the ground is soft enough now for construction to be carried out, and I just want to know when can this project, or this can be fixed.
Mr. Reed, I see Mr. Pastu has taken some comments down. Make sure you get your information himself, or Mr. Water and Wastewater Director's here, so then get out there and make an inspection of that and see what might be occurring and have some conversation. So make sure before you leave this evening, you see Mr. Pastu, okay? And that way you can make communication when you can get started tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? Well, before we adjourn, I'm just going to make a quick comment, because, you know, the, I would again recommend that those that may have not had the opportunity to review the presentation might get some additional information. Please do so regarding the murals. I think there's a lot of ideas and thoughts about this. It's been a long time that this is discussed. I can think back, not only my years here, but before sitting in council as well. And it's not about the council not supporting murals, it's really about the manner in which it's conducted, because you could hear different comments of wanting to help and how we present that, what might have been already proposed, where the locations might be. And there's great ideas about how we want to beautify and put murals, but also, there are items that, why we sit here still today without murals is a structure in place of how, not only how they're painted, but how they're managed, how they're cared for, the maintenance, long-term, where they're located. Downtown is a historic district location. There's some challenges there, but I think there's challenges that could be overcome. And that's where the conversation really has over the past decade-plus, since I've been on council, is why it does move forward. So, and I know it's been a long time for that, back when I was in planning commission, there was conversation about this. But it does take a process and a program. Mr. Cochran, excuse me. I know when the presentation came, the person was making a proposal, and that's how I got here to council. So, look forward to future conversation regarding this, and make sure that if you don't have the information, you can contact the staff. I know Clerk Treasure, Clerk Lavoy as well, and Mr. Cochran's here before this evening. So, at this point, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.